Hello. I'd like Kyle, the meeting to order in our new chambers. And we'll begin with the pleasure of allegiance, just like the old chambers.
The pleasure of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I think it sounds louder in the chamber when the audience participates in that. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. First of all, I'd like to welcome you to our new Fargo City Commission Chambers. Before speaking about that, I'd like to acknowledge that it was three years ago today that Officer Jason Mosher died in the line of duty. A flag lowering ceremony by the Fargo Police Department on the guard was held today at the downtown headquarters in Jason's memory. In honor of Jason and his family, I ask you to join us in a moment of silence. Tonight's city commission meeting is the first meeting held in this new city commission chambers, and we are very excited and proud of the state of the art of this facility. I'd like to thank everyone involved in putting this room together, including our Greg, Brian, and Derek from our communications and public affairs team. I'd also like to acknowledge the designers, technicians, and contractors of AVI from Bismarck Fargo Minneapolis. I'd especially like to thank Trent, Kathy, John, Chris, Nathan, and Zach of AVI. They've put in hundreds of hours into this project. Greg, is Trent around? Oh, there he is, hiding in the corner. Trent is from AVI, and I just wanted to make a few words about how challenging this was and how pleased he is with the outcome.
Absolutely. Mayor and commissioners, on behalf of AVI Systems, I would like to congratulate the city of Fargo on the incredible accomplishment of not just opening these chambers, but the entire city hall project as a whole. Over the course of this project, we have brought in specialists from our AVI offices around the nation, including San Diego, Chicago, and Minneapolis. They've all commented, when they come in this building, that they are just amazed. They're very, very impressed. More than one is marveled at the size, the scope, the quality of the facility. They're aware of the budget that was used to build this fantastic operation, and what the team has accomplished here has been really impressive, not just in this room, but in the entire facility. Like I told you a year ago, almost, when we talked, AVI will continue to stand ready to support this facility in whatever way we can now and in the future.
Thank you very much. Your team's done a great job. You didn't know how many miles of wire we have at this place, or anything like that?
Not a lot.
Some of our features include the fact that when the Roosevelt neighborhood comes about, we have capacity for 207 people, which oftentimes you do fill the place. Additional, the room at the dais is big enough for all our commissions, boards, and committees, of which we have 25 of them. Broadcasting is in high definition for the first time, and it has 4K cameras. So I advise commissioners, you better shave or get cleaned up a bit, because you're much better definition now than you ever used to be. Large video boards do allow those attending the meetings to see, and any of those squiggly things that we put up there, you'll be able to see from our planning department, and the neighborhoods, or anything we want to see will be right up on those boards. There's raised platforms for the media, and the reason that's done that way is they get better angles to see. Nobody can step in front of the camera, and it looks good on TV news at night. There also, I have audio loops in the floor to allow people who are hearing impaired with ease to hear better than they normally could hear. And we will have closed captioned in about a month, John, that that will come about. There's also enhanced security measures for elected officials and members of the public, if there's ever an event, we need to use that. And the other thing you see is the Public Art Incorporated, the four light panels on each side. Those can change in color and recognize in the community and national events. We also can change the pictures eventually, and you'll have to go through the pictures and see what things are represented in the community. But it's very artfully done, and there's a lot of little stories behind each one of those figures that are in there. Tonight there, blue in honor of member of Fargo Police Officer Jason Mosher. I'd also like to welcome Ty Philly for the city of Fargo. Ty, are you around there somewhere? Stand up, please. There. You might recognize him. He used to be a reporter for WDAY, and now he's joined our staff as well as the city public affairs coordinator. We're impressed by his journalistic work, and we're excited to see you join the Fargo team. Thank you, Ty.
I caught Ty going upstairs, and I thought he was coming to interview you. I didn't realize.
Fargo Cast Public Health will host the annual nicotine dependence conference on February 15th from 8:30 to 4:00 PM. The conference is sponsored by Fargo Cast Public Health, the North Dakota Department of Health, Sanford Ascencia, Family Healthcare, NDSU School Pharmacy. Registry is almost full, so please sign up for the conference, with attendees included healthcare professionals, teachers, counselors, and school resource officers. The library, as always, has several interesting programs planned over the next couple of weeks, including craft dinners for kids, library's dance workshop, and storytime session on Tuesday with Gaspar's School of Dance and FM Ballet. A Valentine and an anti-Valentine party for teens on Tuesday, screening for the film Fantom on February 19th as part of the French film series. A Cooking Healthy in Your Instant Pot class on February 23rd, a tea tasting event on February 23rd, and a board game for all ages on February 23rd. For some reason, February 23rd is going to be very busy. We're also, again and again, start beginner yoga classes, if people would like to do that. Planning. The Arts and Culture Commission is accepting submissions for Creative Capital Sponsorship Program, which provides funding towards an impact-driven public art project and arts programming. The program supports the creative endeavors of local artists and public art projects that benefit the community. Deadline is March 1st, if you want to apply, planning department. Police. Chief Todd's here. Yes, he spent some time with the North Dakota legislative session recently, speaking to lawmakers about seized asset forfeiture and public safety protection orders. He said whenever he has an opportunity to engage the legislators and give them insight on how different bills affect his department positively or negatively, or have unintended consequences, he will gladly take those opportunities to share his thoughts. Most legislators appear good conversations with candor, he said, and it gives him a perspective on some of the legislators' thoughts behind the bill. Good opportunity for conversation. Thanks, chief. The police department is really excited about the next bit of news. They're going to take control of the entire border states electric building on February 18th. And with taking control of that building, the remodeling will begin on first floor, and then everybody's going to move over. Their expected date would be what?
The project is supposed to be completed August 31st.
So they'll be going in September 1st, just as the new school year starts, right? Perfect. And one last thing for people in this area, and this is our maiden voyage on this, but the podium on the right is for city staff, or the podium on this side is on city staff, and the podium on the other side is for public comment or public people that want to come up and talk. The idea is to separate the two, so you can have your paperwork or your things you want to have before you, and you don't always have to bump the city staff to the side to get to do what you need at the podium. There's mics at both podiums, so it should work out quite nicely, and we think everybody will like it. So, we're ready for our maiden voyage. Here we go. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda item, omitting item 27B? Some of them. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the January 28, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, you've got to remember, Diana's having a hard time seeing you guys now, because this is a corner here, so. Say it loudly when you say it. Seconded?
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Approve minutes.
Okay, approve minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda items, 1 through 23?
Move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. On regular agenda, 24 appointments to the city hall auditory commission. You have my recommendations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Garrick? Roll call motion, or roll call vote, please?
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 25, State Water Commission requests cost reimbursement for FM diversion flood project costs. Cost totaling $105,433.98, $121,908.95. Ken, Steve Sreck to explain.
Got to learn where the mic is, I guess.
The mic is in the middle for now, then if you're, somebody comes to assist you, then they get lateral mic.
Okay. I'm covering for Kent tonight, and so this is the regular reimbursement request that we have with the state, that first number, the $105,433 is for Oxbow, and the $121,908 is for in-town work within the city of Fargo.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move 25A. Second.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. No motion for 25B?
Second.
Aye.
Second.
Garrick, second. Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. So, you can tell right what time it is. Request for proposals, city-owned property located at First, Second Streets South. Jim Gilmore to explain.
This is a recommendation to call for proposals for a parcel that the city owns along Main Avenue. This is a portion of the property that was acquired. The former, formerly, the Park East apartment buildings were on the site. As you can kind of see in this diagram, that property was acquired to build a dyke and lift station. It was about 54,000 square feet, about a half a block that remains that is not needed for the flood control project. And so, what we'd like to do is call for proposals for the development of this site. At least one adjacent property owner has expressed an interest, and I've had some other calls since this went on your agenda. I prepared a request for proposals for the property. It's a relatively quick turnaround. We're asking for responses in about five weeks, five to six, five weeks, but we can see what kind of proposals we get, and then you can make a decision whether or not to move forward with the sale of the property. The property is currently being used for both staging area, or staging area for the construction of that lift station that's underway, and so it actually won't be available for construction until August 1st. But if the successful proposal is able to work something out with a contractor, they might be able to get into that site and actually get started this year. So that's, that's our hope, that we'd see something developed here sooner rather than later. There's a criteria for that. This is sort of a really high visibility entrance into Fargo, and so I think we'll want to hopefully get a good development that will reflect well on our community at this site. Be happy to answer any questions. The recommendation is to issue the RFP tomorrow.
Mr. Garrick.
Jim, we bought this for flood protection. Are we certain that we can build on it, knowing that we used those dollars to purchase it?
Yes, we've cleared that with the engineering department. I don't know, Brenda, if you want to comment on that, but we've, engineering has identified this particular property is not needed, so.
We'll see if that second mic works, though.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Does it work?
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as this parcel of land, it's the remnant land outside of the levy, and it was purchased with the flood sales tax money, so we can resell that parcel.
Very good, thank you.
Don't they have to follow the flood proof issues, just like city hall was about? We had to follow certain parameters in this area?
Correct. With the site plan review, we will have to, they'll have to follow all of our building rules.
Just like Mid-America Steel as well, that property too, same thing?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just curious, maybe Jim, you would know this, or Nicole, but how did our downtown master plan look at this property, and what recommendations were there in that?
I mean, a lot of the, one of the recommendations of downtown plan was to try to bring in more residential. However, we weren't site-specific on where that would be. I only mention residential because I think there's a high probability that we'll get proposals that'll include residential on this site. But the downtown plan wasn't, you know, site-specific on the private property. This was not included in the downtown plan as any public purpose site.
And I guess my thinking is, is if anybody's submitting RFPs, the more they're in sync with what our master plan is calling for, the better?
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
One more question, mayor. If I might, Jim, further, as I see this, this isn't quite adjacent to the Lashkowitz high-rise parking, but how do, in your sense, is there any connection of this property's future and us and the city looking at the future of the Lashkowitz high-rise? And should they be looked at in sync or not?
You know, the properties really aren't, they're kind of connected by the property that contains the dyke, but there's no real way to drive or walk between the high-rise property and this parcel without crossing either the gateway shopping center or the flood control. I did have an inquiry, I think, several years ago from the high-rise who asked about using this particular parcel as surface parking for the high-rise, but I think there's other places they could find parking. As far as this, for more low-income housing, it's really, I think, a better philosophy to spread that out throughout the community, rather than concentrating more low-income housing on a block that already probably has more low-income housing than anywhere else in the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. 27, public hearings, NSC addition 5703 and 6101, 45th Street North. Approval recommended by the planning commission in 94, growth plan amendment, zoning change from ag to agriculture to public and institutional, first reading of the ordinance, and plat of NSC addition. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, commissioners. Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. Item 27A is a, three items here, a growth plan amendment, a major subdivision, and a zone change for the NSC addition. As you see, this is located here north of Fargo, or no, well, it's in our city limits, but on the north side here. 64th Avenue here, 52nd Avenue North here, I-29 here. There's two large pieces here that are currently unplatted. They are zoned agricultural. And as you see, there are three entitlements, as we mentioned. There's a plat, a zone change, and a growth plan amendment. The plat, the subdivision, will apply to the entire property here, whereas the zone, the growth plan amendment and the zone change only apply to the larger piece. And if you can see through the lines there, what you see under there is the Northern Softball Complex, which is owned and managed by the Fargo Park District. The land itself is owned by the city of Fargo, and we have a long-term 50-year lease with the park district for that property. So they've been developing that over some years here. So again, to facilitate that zone change, we have to have a growth plan amendment. Currently, this area here is all designated in this brown color as industrial, so for future industrial land uses. The zone, the growth plan amendment will change the land use designation of this area here, which will be Lot 1 of the plat, to a parks and open space designation, which will support the zoning of PI, public and institutional, which is the appropriate zoning for a large-scale recreational facility owned by a government agency such as the Northern Softball Complex. Here's the plat, a lot of lines on the plat here, but again, that just lays out that this is Lot 1 here, the larger lot where the softball complex is, and this is Lot 2. As part of this process, Lot 2 is being platted, but not rezoned at this time, nor is its growth plan designation changing. It will retain the industrial growth plan designation, again, for further future development. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant is the city of Fargo, and we are here tonight, so if you have any questions, please ask. And that concludes staff's presentation, commissioners. Thank you.
Mayor.
Eric.
Chairman. I will call attention, the zoning, rezoning ordinance that I prepared for this, I'll need to make one change when we submit it to you in two weeks' hence. It'll just be amended to focus only on that one Lot 1. The time I was drafting, it was uncertain, but it was a blizzard day, so I wasn't able to confirm it with anybody at city hall. So we'll make that change, and it'll come back in proper in two weeks.
You're cleaning up some language, basically.
Yep.
Okay. Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this just motion? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Mr. Grinberg.
Mr. Chairman, Eric, do we have to have that stated in a motion, or is that?
You know, I'll just, I'll just make an amendment for the two weeks hence. It'll come back as amended, and I'll put a motion to that effect along with the ordinance.
So we should move it tonight?
You can certainly amend the motion. You can just take the suggested motion with the understanding that the, that the, I'm reading it here, the ordinance be amended to reflect zoning change on Lot 1 only. Lot 1 only.
Got that?
Yep.
So moved.
Thank you.
Good job. Any further discussion? Some things don't change, Eric.
That's right.
Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Take it up. Item C, application filed by CI Sport for property tax exemption for a project located at 2121 43rd Street South, in which applicant will use operation, designing, and marketing collegial and corporate apparel. Ben Houshka to explain.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application by CI Sport, who operates on Broadway Downtown right now. They will be expanding into the building that was the Gander Mountain that they are purchasing, and the application, as you see, includes the projected staff increases. They are a primary sector business, and they did come before the Tax Exempt Review Committee at the January meeting, who recommends approval of a five-year, 100% exemption for this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions bound by the commissioners? Mr. Garrick.
Is there a representative here?
I believe there is.
My name is Warren Ackley. I'm one of the partners in CI Sport.
Warren, if you don't get the exemption, what happens then?
The project would, would not happen without the incentives.
You're putting a substantial amount of money into it. This is a $30,000 a year exemption, if I'm reading correctly. Considering the large amount that you're putting into it, $30,000 incentive for five years seems like a minimal amount compared to the size of the project.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
$30,000 a year, is my understanding, from what you just said, is a make or break for you. You would not be able to do the project without a $30,000 a year incentive.
Yes.
You might explain, Warren, that oftentimes for projects like this, corporations like yourself do get an incentive to do that. Otherwise, you can go different markets. You could take your CI apparel anywhere you want in the state.
Absolutely. We've had other opportunities. We, you know, obviously, this location is, is a location that's been vacant for some time, very visible for Fargo. We think it's a great location for us. It's also a great opportunity for getting us out of, out of downtown area, and we have several proposals for that building as well, so it's a, it's not just one project, it'll be two projects at once. And so we feel very good about it, but we do need these incentives to go forward.
And the additional thing, you go from 83 employees to 134 employees. So you're adding workforce to our community, right?
We definitely will be adding workforce. We hope to add at least 40 people to this, at this new location.
And then you'll be able to make NDSU championship shirts in a matter of a few seconds, is that right?
We will make those 24/7 if we have to.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this tax tenant? Is anyone who wishes to speak? I'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a five-year, 100% exemption on the project improvements for the expansion of CI Sport Incorporated at 2121 43rd Street South.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just curious, maybe, Ben, you could answer this. I've been asked by somebody in the community whether or not this property, the Gander Mountain property, has received any tax exemptions or incentives before this?
They've received no tax exemptions. They, the property was in a TIF district a number of years ago.
Okay, and the second is, has CI Sport, had they received any tax breaks or incentives in their location they're moving from?
They have not.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, to the commissioner Strand's point, you know, the original store, Gander Mountain, was retail and wouldn't have qualified under primary sector as a box check to move forward.
Correct.
And now we're bringing manufacturing into a retail center and retrofitting the building, so it's, you know, it certainly ties back to the criteria of primary sector.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, mayor. And just one last comment is, you know, Commissioner Garrick and I aren't always on board for some of these incentives, but it's really important, and Warren, that you're paying a living wage, and I thank, I commend you for that. It's not like you're coming in at minimum wage jobs. Your, your projected jobs are at $15 an hour and up, and that, that's critical, in my opinion, when somebody's getting public support to, to have their employees that the new credit positions, getting a living wage. So that's an important part of this.
Ben, they'll still be paying taxes for the building? They're going to just tip for the remodel? For the land?
No, this exemption would be on the entire building. They'll pay on the land.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
No.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 28, St. Paul Newman Center Edition. I'll leave the rest of that out, since we're quite familiar with this project. Approval recommended by the planning commission, 12418, continued to 11419, regular meeting. There's zoning changes, there are zoning ordinance, a planned unit development, master plan, use plan, first reading the ordinance established by the planned unit development, and a plat of the St. Paul Newman Center Edition. This should be explained by Nicole Cutfield.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. As a brief recap, the public hearing for this case was heard in January 14th, and at the closing of that public hearing, the commission tabled this item until tonight. Thanks to our, to the hard work of the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association leaders and the applicant, we're glad to report that a compromise has been met. Staff received confirmation on this past Thursday from both parties that a compromise is reflected as what we're now referring to as option D. Based on what was presented to the commission, I'll summarize, on January 14th, I'll summarize these changes as follows. So, let's see. Got some. So, okay, we'll practice around with the PowerPoint here. The, so Option D basically reduces the proposed number of units from 33 to 32. This includes all the phases of townhomes. They're proposing a grouping on Lot 3, and then they've added a lot, potential Lot 4, for future townhomes. With all that combined with the pastor's residence, that would equal 32 units an acre. They've also proposed reducing the height of a portion of the building to four stories, and then respectively on the very end cap, three stories. This is also moving, as you can see on the site plan, moving the townhome project further to the north to allow some green space at the corner of 12th Street and 11th Avenue North. I believe Larry Nygaard, the applicant, and both Ken and Oxon, representing the neighborhood, will be having a few words to share, if, if you would like. I just wanted to provide a brief staff update in terms of what we think is the next steps. In terms of, as a summary, everyone obviously played a very large role in developing a level of compromise. There's basically meetings day-to-day as we proceeded from the last two weeks. As you know, we're in a quasi-judicial process with the planning regulations, and it's a balancing of property rights and comprehensive planning goals. We realize there are going to be parties and members of the public who might still not be in support of this project. However, at this point, our job is to make sure that you have the information you need to make the decision. And so staff is here to answer any questions related to the project itself. Some of the questions I've already received from some of our Commissioners is, what are the next steps look like? So we can hopefully, there's been a lot of discussion as part of this hearing process, is what of our processes? How can those be changed or improved upon? As well as what's next as far, part of this dialogue? Obviously, this is one case, there could be more, and so how these cases proceed. I'm glad to announce that last week, we started talking with the Planning Commission about our 2019 work plan. As you know, as part of our increases in our budget for 2019, you included funding for the core neighborhood plan. And that core neighborhood plan is starting, we're starting to develop a timeline and process with our Planning Commission and Community Development Committee. What I can say as part of that process is, we will have a public engagement process with all our stakeholders on par with downtown and focus and Go 2030. You'll see nothing other than that level of expectation on public engagement with those processes. And, and the purpose of that planning process is to come up with a coordinated consensus bill, long-range vision. I think what testimony you've heard over the past, not as part of this project, but as part of many others, includes, over the passing of the Roosevelt Plan Update 10 years ago, that vision has continued to grow and change in respect, perspective people's mind. So it's time to get that vision brought together and build a consensus and, and a comprehensive plan like we would expect in all our other comprehensive planning processes. Also, thanks for the increased neighborhood feedback over the years and the discussion of cycle of, this, you know, continued cycle of blight. Again, thanks to your budget increases in 2019, I know our building official is working on a full-time code enforcement position to be hired in 2019. We're also collaborating with our inspections department and assessors department, along with Habitat for Humanity, Rebuilding Together, to update on our demolition, dangerous building, rehab, and housing stabilization programs. So these are all activities that continue to add to this conversation, apart from this case specific, but as you hear the long-range planning efforts. Bottom line is, staff supports this project, and specifically at this location, at the intersection of 12th Avenue and University, next proximity to the university, NDSU in particular, we believe the improvements in investment will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. It will be, will lead to providing better managed housing and a safer environment. I know Larry and both Ken are here, if you have any questions, or if you wanted to have any questions for me.
Why don't you ask your speakers to come up first and get that part?
I think Larry had a few words to say.
Evening, Mayor and Member of the Commission. Is, is this working? All right. We're really happy to be here tonight. It's, it's, it's a pivotal moment for this project, and it, it's the culmination of many years of work. And I want to, before I get started tonight, thank the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association for working hard to reach this agreement with us. I also have with me Earl Wilhelm from the Diocese. He'd like to speak when I'm finished as well. I know it's, it's been a big effort for them too, but I don't have a lot of technical details to add to what Nicole reported earlier. We're just excited to be here, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have about either the process or the end result.
Thank you for working through compromise. Ken?
Well, it's coming.
Okay.
Come on, it's here.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Father Chaney. I'm the director of the Newman Center. I've been working on this project for about 14 years. It's good to be here. We believe this project will be a positive thing for the community, especially to address the increased density needs around the perimeter of NDSU, to create a safe environment around NDSU, as well as to build a broad-based value with the programming that we're going to afford to the students of the NDSU campus, changing hearts, changing lives, forming future leaders. That's what we're, that's what we're all about. So it's good to be here, and we're hopeful that, we're thankful for the Roosevelt Neighborhood Association, all the work that Roarz has done to get us here to this point this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. You can have your students quit sending emails now. We truly received a lot from the Newman Center. Thank you. It's amazing how many lives you've touched.
Thank you, Commissioners. Members of the RNA have spent the past month working to reach a compromise with the applicant to achieve a project that is better fit for, for our neighborhood. We sincerely thank Commissioners John Strand and Tony Grinberg and the, the planning staff for their patience and assistance in reaching an agreement. We also thank city commissioners for voting to continue the project back in January. At the end, numerous meetings were held directly between RNA representatives, the Fargo Diocese, and Roarz Development. Out of this came a proposal before you and provides what we believe was the option that gives our neighborhood a chance for a future. As a result of our discussions, the project now has lowered density. We feel it provides a buffer on the east side along 12th Street North that otherwise wouldn't have existed. It gives our neighborhood residents an easement from the height and density to the west and provides 11 townhomes along that street that helps to replace some of the total, sorry, some of the lost single-family residences. It also provides much-needed green space, not only for the residents of this development, but to the neighbors as a buffer to help transition into higher density. It lowers the height of the building to four stories for much of the market-rate housing and moves the entrance of the parking garage and parking lot to 11th Avenue. Thanks to Roarz and to, and Fargo Diocese for working with us in good faith and to find a compromise, in finding a compromise. Finally, we are grateful to Fargo Catholic Diocese for making the offer of a few of the, offer to salvage a few of the historic homes to be moved into new locations within the neighborhood. We're excited about that as an option. It bears reminding that Roosevelt Neighborhood Association came into existence 20 years ago because of city efforts to ensure we were represented as a neighborhood. Meetings were held to organize the RNA with support from Fargo Planning Department. Staff and Commissioners welcomed us as an important component to core neighborhood concerns, sorry, core neighborhood improvement. We are here in the capacity, that capacity, to provide support for this proposal with some lingering concern. We continue to have concerns over density on the south end of this block that is over four times current density. We continue to have doubts over where overflow parking from the project will occur in our neighborhood. We feel that the, that building, four or five-story buildings next to single-family one- or two-story homes is not good long-term planning practice, and we still have concerns about the precedent it sets. But we are also fearful of how it could have been worse if we didn't go ahead with this proposal, so that's why we did so. It is also important to state that there are residents of our neighborhood and other neighborhoods who do not accept that this compromise is in the best interest of any neighborhood and who would vehemently disagree with this outcome. They feel that the Commission should reject this plan as, as it is not in their, our best interest in the community. We understand those concerns, and this Commission should consider and hear those voices as well, because they have valid fears. These concerns deserve the full attention of this Commission as important to the future direction of our city. Approving the demolition of single-family homes to be replaced by large-scale, high-density developments is not a long-term solution for core neighborhoods. Lacking clear policy on future development is a disservice to the residents of core neighborhoods that are working to make this a better community. We are left wondering what high-density projects like this mean to our neighborhood. We've been told repeatedly throughout this process that the Newman Center project is a special instance, and we shouldn't expect to encounter unique circumstances like this again. We will work for that to be the case for future proposals. Finally, residents of our, of core neighborhoods see gaps in the process that we need to be addressed, that we feel need to be addressed. We question what the value is of previous agreements Fargo has made with neighborhoods in the form of zoning ordinances and development codes. What is the purpose and value of our future land use plan and neighborhood plans? Skirting the enforcement of residential protection standards by the over-application of PUDs is problematic, and we feel short-sighted. We desire a process that respects the property rights of our neighborhood residents, and the city stand by its resident property owners and honors these codes, ordinances, and agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, any further comments?
No, unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Any questions by the Commissioners? Do I have a motion?
Well, you can make a motion if you like.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I thought it was two guys that work with the neighborhoods, first and second. Sorry. Mr. Gerg.
Larry, you mind coming up? I got a couple of questions for you here. So when we spoke, I told you that as a resident of Roosevelt, which I am, I'm a Catholic. I went to NDSU. I've used the Newman Center myself. But I told you, or I asked you the same thing that I talked to the neighbors with, my neighbors, that I would support this project if incentives were not involved. So at this point, will incentives be involved in this project?
I believe they will be. At least, we're going to request them.
Thank you for your honesty. So, you know, with that, the, the choice for me is binary. So I will not support a project that has these larger incentives attached to it. If it's not economically feasible, then it's not done. So I wish you luck, and I hope it happens, but I will not support the incentive, and therefore I will not support the, this iteration of the project.
Mr. Chairman, we're not voting on incentives tonight, are we?
It's all part, it's all part of it. It's all one big thing.
We're just voting on the, the project. We're not voting. And as far as I know, there aren't any incentives approved at this point. There haven't even been any proposed, as far as I know. So that's just my comment.
Any other discussion or questions? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor, and to all of you folks in the community who've been engaged and involved, I, I want to thank you for your public service. You know, Ken, I, you're a great addition to our Community Development Commission, and, and I'm sure the community is seeing the skill set you have and, and your peers as you, as you advocate and your, your circle advocate for neighbors. I kind of feel like nobody's happy when you come to a compromise like this, but when I hear the graciousness of the neighbor voices, you know, I, I, I'm reminded of times I and our others give a eulogy. There's, there's, there's a grief, a grieving aspect of this, and there's a loss, and, and there's a healing that's required for us going forward. And, and my concerns right now is, I just don't ever want to have to see our neighborhood folks have to go through this again. I hope we can all decide. And the, the folks on the project side, I hope that we can all decide that we're going to make it our highest priority to have our policies direct our actions and to not, and to address these, these gaps in policies where they don't mirror each other. And then you're, you're improvising. And it's in those improvisations that, that things change. So I, I hope we can get to the point where we support Nicole's staff and planning and community development and get to, to a, a policy-driven move forward. Because the, the neighbors can't keep having to do this, and we can't keep expecting them to show up to have these battles. And, and, and actually, it's on our shoulders for policymakers to have policies that, that address these, these practices. So I want to thank everybody for, for rolling up their sleeves, for everybody yielding. This Plan D that evolved is, 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 is a great spot to have gotten to compared to where it all began. And, and the neighborhood's voices are, and fingerprints are on this. This evolution and the, and the developers from the Newman Center and Roarz have, have really worked hard to come up with a, a project we can go forward with. And, and I'm, and I'm concerned if we didn't have this evolved project, we would have in 90 days something worse. So, so there's a trade-off. So I, I, my heart, my heart aches for the neighbors that are, are, are seeing another block lost in their core neighborhood. And it's like another funeral. And it's like another grieving, and it's another loss. I just hope we all leverage this into a positive change for the future, that, that, we, we know those realities and those concerns, and, and we, we just own it and, and get policies that, that, that have addressed these things proactively. So my, my most sincere thanks to everybody from the neighbors, neighborhood, and for everybody from Roarz and from the Newman Center for, for your, your really sincere engagement here and, and your, your desire to, to come up with something we can all live with, even though you all, you all compromised. I, I just want to acknowledge you all for that.
To follow up on that, I'm talking to Nicole Kutchfield today. The Planning Department is planning and working with the neighborhoods, trying to make a plan going forward. We probably had a pretty good one 10 years ago. Times have changed. Things are moving in a different direction. We have a governor who believes in density. We have different people are pushing us on density. What kind of density do we need? We need to respect the neighborhood, what the neighborhood wants. And Community Development, Commissioner Strand, that you're sharing that as well, and you're supposed to be looking at rehabilitation, how to keep our single-family homes. We have different money coming at us now that people are really interested in helping that out. So I look for great work over the next six months, and I think you've set that goal to try to bring something and work with the neighborhood. The other thing is, the neighborhoods have great representation now, good articulate leaders, and I think you can help us come to a compromise that works going forward. So the next development is not taking as much time as this took to get to a solution. So roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Eric?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 29, waive requirement to receive and file the ordinance one week prior to first reading and a first reading in the ordinance amended section 251606 of Article 2516 of Chapter 25 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to restrictions of sale, service, dispensing of alcoholic beverages. This is for Nancy to respond to, Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you today is an ordinance change that was discussed at the last meeting. There was a request for a waiver or an ordinance change to allow an individual to hold more than one B-limited license. The ordinance did provide for one B-limited license to be owned by an already holding B-licensee, B-limited licensee, so it would allow them to hold two licenses. Under this instance, the, the applicant for the change is going out of business, and she had a buyer for the business. That license will come back to the city, and that buyer will have a first preference at that application for that B-limited license, and then there is still another B-limited license available to be purchased from the city. I have it on for waive receive and file and first reading. We did have a hearing on it last, last meeting, and there are some time constrictions that are in place. This application had already been made back in October, November of 2018, and then the, the purchaser was then purchased by another entity, which, which kind of put the brakes on. If they're allowed to hold this license, they will proceed with that application.
Any questions to Nancy?
I make the recommended motion.
Second. Motion is seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I think Commissioner Strand, I'm to you. You have two items you want to talk about.
Well, these are, this is where we get to the real important business, Mayor Mahoney. Mike Redlinger, happy belated birthday to you, a week ago today. And Kimber Anderson, I know your birthday's coming up, the 19th. We, we appreciate both of your, your work that you do for us and wish you the best.
Thank you. Bruce Grab, legislative update, you don't have anything going on real hot right now? Or you, Commissioners are well-briefed in that area? Or legislative body isn't doing much right now? What's the answer here?
No, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I hope so. Actually, the, kind of a strange time in the legislative session. The hearing schedule has started to slow down a little bit. Evidenced by this week's hearing list, we've got a hearing today, two tomorrow on Tuesday, and only one on Wednesday. But a lot of bills that still reside in committee. I think the House in particular, if you look at the clock and the time that they have left to get bills out of committee, going to be a lot of, of hours spent out there. Tomorrow at the Special Assessments Task Force meeting, Commissioner Grinberg asked me to give a little update on legislation relative to specials, so happy to do that tomorrow. But we continue to keep our eye on these bills. Some have passed, some have failed, a lot still reside in committee, but the way we're trying to update you is with a Friday updated master list that shows those that we've testified on, whether we support or oppose, those that we're just monitoring, and try to keep that updated weekly. Continue to have calls weekly with the North Dakota League of Cities and Johnals, and so just trying to stay on top of those 907 bills that got introduced.
Thank you. Just a question to the audience. Could everybody hear well? Was there any problem hearing any of the stuff? Can't hear them. Is there any other business? Is there any other business? A motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.